Hey world, it's John Pinto, your disembodied voice, bon vivant, roving realtor, home chef, BMW enthusiast, and legislative advocate. I'm here with Scott Sedgley, current Napa Council member and future mayor of Napa. That's why we're here talking. Say hi to everybody now, Scott.
Thank you, John. Hello, everybody out there. What a marvelous day it is here in Napa.
That's right. We're not only in Napa, we're actually in Rutherford, Napa Valley. At Inglewood, you've seen me vlog from here before. The Chateau from 1887 is behind us. Hello, Cecil Penland. How are you doing, professor out in Colorado? Very good.
Hello, Colorado.
So Scott, tell us a little bit, why are you running for mayor? Tell us a little bit about that.
Well, as simple as being asked to.
I understand that. You know, we do a lot of volunteer work at the California Association of Realtors. We have 900 directors conducting the business of 210,000 Realtors. And the best way of recruiting is tapping somebody on the shoulder and asking.
And of course, there's more to the backstory. I've been on council for two terms. I've been on the school board for nine years prior to that. I'm a retired fire captain. I've been involved with several nonprofits in the valley, from the Historical Society to the Foundation for Napa Recreation. So I've been very active. And last year, our current mayor, Jill Teckle, approached me and said, Scott, what are your plans for 2020? And I told the mayor, I said, well, it's still about a year and a half away. I hadn't given it a lot of thought. And she goes, well, I'd like you to run for mayor because I'm ready to retire and you are the most qualified, you are the most respected, and I trust you to fill my shoes. And I respect Mayor Teckle immensely. And when she put her faith in me, I said, I will do it.
Very good. Hey Eric, can you do me a favor? We ran out of wine. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
That's right. We have to interrupt this special message with an urgent need for more Cabernet Sauvignon. So Scott, you know, of course, we've got COVID-19 now. You've got economic considerations, et cetera, et cetera. When I'm asking you about priorities as the future Napa mayor, I'm not only posing that question to you, I'm posing that question through you to all of the mayors, all of our constituents, all of our Realtors, our homeowners, our renters throughout the state of California in terms of where mayor's priority should be. We'll use Napa as an example. But what do you see as your priorities going into 2021?
The highest priority, I think, for any city council member or mayor for their community has to be a vibrant economy. You have to have that stability in your community for revenue and services. And if your community does not have an economy, you can't provide those services that your residents expect and they deserve. Napa is fortunate that our economy generally, void of pandemics, we're vibrant. We have, you know, we have interested people coming here that want to do good things. The hospitality industry is our bread and butter. I understand that some people think that we've put all our eggs in one basket over the hospitality industry, but I look at it as we're fortunate to have eggs. So many communities don't have that. And so for me, the most, the highest priority for me is to make sure our economy is vibrant and diverse. I mean, the diversity comes, right now, we're pretty much a mono industry here in hospitality and wine, but still, it's a blessing. And I constantly reach out and look to invite other types of industry and cottage industries here to help. But that's, I think, the biggest priority for any of us. Number two is a stable and efficient organization. As city employees, we have to have good city employees providing efficient, good services.
I was on the Napa County Grand Jury a couple of years ago, and I will say that the city of Napa came out looking much better than the city of San Alina did.
It's a challenge. But you know, if we don't have, you know, an efficient and stable organization, if we're not hiring good people in those jobs to deliver that service, we've missed the mark.
So let's go there for a minute. There is some trepidation with the loss in revenues to cities, counties, government. You know, how are they going to continue to maintain a budget? And are we looking fairly stable in continued employment for city workers?
Well, that's been a very current topic for us is the budget. We run a two-year budget cycle, and so we're just starting our, in our second year, fiscal year of our two-year budget. And we had to reduce our expenditures by about 20% of our general fund.
Very good. By the way, here.
And we did that, thank you, John, we did that without layoffs. We've frozen in the city of Napa, workforce of close to 300, we've frozen 40 positions now that are vacant. So that will, that will catch up with us eventually, but we had no other choice. We avoided layoffs in our Parks and Recreation Department, which was looking like it was going to take a big hit. We were able to weather that through a combination of less money towards capital improvement projects. And we used some rainy day funds, some emergency revenue to balance the fiscal year 2021 budget.
I think I saw in the Register that you just got a federal grant of $975,000?
Yeah, CARES is the acronym for that money that came through. So we divided that up on Tuesday. We approved the proportions to go into some remote working. So, you know, a lot of our city employees, because of social distancing in offices, we can't put them so close together. So we're buying some technology so more people can work from home. And that's how we put $100,000 into business stimulus. We put $100,000 into renter protection for eviction, that we can help, you know, get people through the storm and potential evictions from their homes, which would be tragic. So yeah, that money is a godsend that will help us weather the storm. So we're just, we're just hopeful that as a nation, we can get through this pandemic safely and as quickly as we can. Wear your mask, social distance like John and I are doing, and wash your hands. And I have my mask with me at all times. I'm unmasked for this, but we are social distance. But those efforts will get us through this.
So let's talk a little bit about the vibrant economy because there's been so much bad information or no information, no leadership from various levels of government on what to do and what not to do. My wife and I have basically taken things into our own hands. We're very careful in terms of distancing, masks, sheltering in place. Of course, Gavin Newsom is doing his very best under very difficult circumstances. So let's take Inglewood, for instance, okay? Inglewood is by reservation only.
Yes.
So you don't have an inundation of overcrowding. All the employees are wearing masks. They're all wearing gloves. All the tables are spaced out and outside. And they have taken it upon themselves to practice good COVID-19 protocols.
Yes.
People are looking for guidance. What do you think of the idea of setting up a task force with businesses in Napa County coming up with, above and beyond the normal protocols of how creative ways that businesses, bars, restaurants, wineries, factories, whatever, can proactively even fine tune and invent new COVID-19 protocols that go above and beyond what the governor is calling for, the county and the city, but give these businesses an opportunity to open up and get some revenue streams?
Of course, you know, those smarter than me and those in the business that actually are doing retail or sales, you know, they're coming forth with a lot of great options. One are parklets. Some other cities are using them. They're actually a little wooden platform that extend off the curb into two parking places in the street in front of you.
I've seen those in San Francisco and Valencia.
Exactly. And so we've just approved that. Our downtown property improvement district, the P-Bid, has found some money to cover the construction costs. And so it's at curb level, so a wheelchair can roll right off the ADA compliant curb onto the platform. They have handrails around them. And so in the next couple of weeks downtown Napa, you will see a lot of parklets that are going to add not only for the dining experience, but for some outdoor retail as well. So that's one solution. We're looking at street closures. A lot of communities have done some partial street closures for time. We widened the sidewalk on Main Street before the COVID.
I saw that.
Before the COVID hit, so we can get some more dining out there. But all those ideas, council is trying to be as responsive as government can be. Sometimes the bureaucracy is slow, that, you know, every department has to check off, you know, the fire department, Public Works, you know, and with the trash haulers, we've got to make sure they can come in and get their dumpsters out. So there's all those little things that make it work. But council is, we understand the pain of our businesses and our hotels and everything in town. And so we're looking at any option that the government can help. And that's what government's there for, to be responsive to the needs.
So let me give you a little metaphor for those parklets and closing the streets. As I mentioned, my family is from Napoli, Naples, Italy. And man, you have never seen traffic like you have seen in Italy. And the government there, many local governments, have chosen to turn certain locations into Centro Mediovale, medieval centers, Zona Verde, green, no cars. And I got to tell you, it is just lovely. I mean, it's like Disney World.
Yes.
You know, you're just walking around, not dodging diesel fumes, not dodging cars, and being pedestrian friendly, being able to get more tables outside. So can you enlighten us, enlighten us Nappans, the tourists that come to Napa? Where do you think are the streets that would be most likely to be closed off? I would think probably Brown Street behind the courthouse.
Very well. Yep, you, John, you pay attention because that's one we earmarked a long time ago. That piece of, that short little section of Brown by the old Molinari Cafe in Carpe Diem. And then you already have, it's open over to First Street. There's kind of the parkway there with some trees, but it's really not open what it can be. Then you'll hit Allegria. And so we're looking at that whole strip from, would come from Pearl to Third. Would be, would be a good place to start.
Oh my goodness. Have you ever been to Salerno?
No.
Salerno is the south end of the Amalfi Coast. And they've got a stretch.
Yeah.
I mean, it looks like a football field, but they've got a whole stretch of the downtown that is all closed to traffic. So would you be framing it, framing the Zona Verde without traffic around the parking garages?
That's where it starts. Actually, and to expand a little bit on that parkway, would be the removal of the block where the county assessor, those offices, the old Carruthers Building, a lot of people refer to it.
Yeah, near my cigar, near Napa cigars.
Exactly. So if that building, eventually the county owns it, its county offices, if they could relocate down the road, this would be a goal of mine, we would remove the Second Street Garage, which was the first garage that Napa built. And it's frankly, it's the worst garage we have to.
That's the one across from Allegria?
Yes. And across from the courthouse, the north of the courthouse.
Near where you vote.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And so if we could acquire those two properties, we already have the garage, that's the city parking garage, but then the county building, we would raise that and make that a plaza. And so you'd have the parkway that goes north and south that parallels Main Street, and then we'd have a big green plaza on those two spots. And I think that would really make a marvelous addition.
Well, that sounds wonderful. You know, I'm from Brooklyn, and we like to explode things in Brooklyn. Can I apply for the job of setting the explosives under that garage, which I hate already?
The garage would be a tough one. That's all cement, but we can do it.
Oh, that would come down with a bang.
Yeah, but it would open up, you know, the aesthetics of the historic courthouse, you know, it would really make downtown a plaza. A lot of people ask us about Sonoma Square. They go, boy, Sonoma Square is such a beautiful place.
Yes.
It is a beautiful place. Visionaries there saw how they set that up, and they built the town around the courthouse square, the City Hall square, and they've maintained it. And it is beautiful. So if we could, if we could capture something similar, of course, you know, that's unique to Sonoma, but if we could do something like that on those two parcels downtown with a, Dwight Murray Plaza is the one across the street where the old clock tower was.
Yeah.
If you were around when the clock tower was, that's right next to Allegria.
Yeah.
We want to level that, make it a flat surface and not the sunken pit, and green it up. And we, that was a capital improvement project that was in the works, but since our budget has been reduced by 20%, we've had to postpone that project. But that's in the works to redo that whole Dwight Murray Plaza that's in front of Don Perico into the west of Allegria. And that would be all part of that. That's my vision.
Well, they certainly can use some beauty over there because you got great restaurants there, Don Pedro, Allegria, you got the bar there. I'm having a senior moment. It's a nice bar. Then you got the noodle place.
Uh huh, yeah.
Yeah, it's all.
Jack's is in there, and it's a, it's a great spot. And Todd Zepolski and Company that did the Archer, and then they've just recently redone the Gordon Building.
Yeah.
Beautiful old building. They, they own the Kohl's Department Store. And Kohl's Department Store would like to downsize a little bit. Those big, large retailers don't need as much square footage as they have. They're in a long-term lease. So everyone's actively looking for a new spot for Kohl's. And then, then he has a vision to redo that block, tear down the old, the product of redevelopment, the old Kohl's Department Store, and put there some downtown residential, some more retail, and some more hotel rooms on that block, which is an exciting idea. And it would, around the 9/11 memorial, that would just be, 9/11 memorial would just be fantastic for that whole area with the Opera House and Kohl's Chop House and the whole block, it would just be fantastic.
So I'm afraid to ask you this question, and you may not be privy to the answer, but one of my very favorite venues is the Blue Note in Napa.
Yes.
Do you think we're going to have a Blue Note in Napa for the?
Boy, you know, we're all trying to do everything we can to help Ken Tesler and the Blue Note. It's been a great venue, but he's hurting. You know, he started those, in the Oxbow Commons, the outdoor stage.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and that was going very well for some summer concerts out there. And of course, now those were canceled this year, as was Bottle Rock. Of course, his, the Blue Note venue has been dark, upstairs is dark. He's in a bad spot. He's got some great ideas to try to keep him afloat to get through this, but I'm keeping my fingers crossed that we can keep Ken Tesler and Blue Note there in the Opera House.
That is a world-class venue in downtown Napa.
Yes, it certainly is. They've done a great job, and he's done a great job with it. It's been, it's grown. Those, Opera Houses struggled, you know, from the historic Opera House, then to City Winery, and all struggled there. But then Ken came in with a model that seemed to be working, and it was growing, and then this hit. So he's in a bad spot, and I'm sure I'll do everything I can. I do now as a council member and as a mayor to keep him in business there.
Very good, very good. Another one of my favorite venues, the Culinary Institute.
Yes.
Is there any light at the end of the tunnel on when they may resume operations?
I don't know their, their operational plan. We were fortunate to have, when the CIA, when Copia left, we were uncertain of what was going to happen there. There was a lot of ideas floated, but then when the Culinary Institute came in and took that spot, we were so thankful and excited that that, that space would continue on as in part of Robert Mondavi's vision. And they're the best to do it. The big question is across the street on the south parking lot?
Yeah, where the gardens are.
Where the gardens were. And so that's in private hands now. That was, that was sold in part of the dissolution of the Copia. And so there's been a few plans floated for that. Nothing is approved or entitled yet. So that'll be a key, I think, to the whole Oxbow District, what happens. And then you may have seen recently, there was a proposal for a five-star hotel on the corner of First and Sosco that bridged the wine train tracks, you know. And so that, that proposal is working through the system to try to seek approval entitlements. But that end of First Street, the Oxbow District is, has a great future, and we're very excited. The project that never came to fruition was the Ritz Carlton, that was at the end of First Street at Silverado Trail, the big vacant space down there that was going to be a 350-room Ritz, and it's languished for 10 years. But I'm hopeful that, you know, that the next group of investors and developers will come in and get that project going too, because it'd be an ideal spot for that, to anchor the east end of First Street.
Yeah. Now, by the way, you may or may not be privy to the trend that despite the fact that I live in Napa, I am Silicon Valley-centric real estate broker. And I've been espousing the praises of living in the North Bay for a long time. And all of a sudden, as people are getting untethered from their Silicon Valley offices, I'm getting people calling me from San Francisco, the Peninsula, the South Bay, the East Bay, wanting to come up to Solano, Napa, and Sonoma County because the prices are a lot less over here, the density is a lot less, the infection is a lot less. So as a councilman and a future mayor, what do you garner from that trend?
Well, I'm hopeful that people moving in, you know, have, have children. I mean, that's for me, for our schools, you know, our enrollment in Napa has declined in our school systems. And for me, a vibrant, back to our vibrant economy and community, children in schools are all part of that. And so, you know, that's what my hope is when, if we become a more, a highly desire, we're already a highly desirable place to live, but my hope and my push will be to make sure that that, that maybe that change in population includes families and not, not just dual-income, you know, singles. So I have no way of controlling that, you know, because it will be market-driven. But that's what we, we hope to do is keep our, our diversity, our diversity in families, our diversity in color, all there. So we are that, that kind of a community that we have been for the last, you know, my 65 years here. So, but I see that trend. People are now, you know, companies are saying, you know, we can still, we can still run business if you're working from home.
Yeah. Now, speaking of schools, have, has the Napa School District come to any decision on what their COVID-19 protocols are going to be for the new school year?
They're not opening, first day of school won't open as normal. It'll be still online learning, and they're going to, I think there's four phases in their plan. So it'll start in August with what, how it finished at the end of the school year, and then hopefully, as our numbers of infections decrease, we can start moving up, you know, part-time classes, maybe extending the work, the school day. But that requires negotiations with teachers and parents and everything else on how we can, you know, talk to more of a college, you know, you know, you start school at 7:00 in the morning. Of course, some kids already do with early placement. But then run, run public schools to 8:00 at night and to spread out the population. So all those ideas are being discussed, but unfortunately, right now, school will not start on its normal start date.
Are there any programs being implemented in the school district or in the city to help underprivileged families get the high-speed internet and hardware necessary so that they can have a proper homeschooling room?
Yeah, the Napa Education Foundation is a big nonprofit fundraising arm of that. So they have in the past been able to provide resources to help that demographic in our school. So yes, that's always, always something there that we're aware of, and it's just the same with wireless signals. You know, not, not every area in town has the same bandwidth for that kind of technology. And then we can get into the whole discussion on 5G and 4G and antennas. You know, there's, there's a debate about that. And council, we had a very emotional and trying debate on Verizon coming in with small-cell antennas. And, you know, so the education world says, we need it. Business says, we need it. But there's, you know, a legitimate portion of our population that think that it's not healthy.
Right.
And then you have, you know, the World Health Organization and the Center for Disease Control. Sometimes a difference ends of the spectrum on really what electromagnetic fields do to us. It's just so challenging. But I think a lot of it, the, it's where we're headed, what we're doing here today. It's just what the world we're in. And we have to make sure that the, the level of those, those radio frequency waves are not cooking our brains.
Yeah, let's talk a little bit about civic participation. How often does the Napa City Council meet?
First and third Tuesdays of every month. And we have an afternoon session that starts at 3:30. And generally, those are routine items because you have, you have employees that want to go home at 5:00. And so kind of the routine business we do in the afternoon session, and then the evening session starts at 6:30. And those are all the public hearings and those type of agenda items that come on.
And this is all on Zoom right now?
All, ours is Teams, actually. It's a.
Oh, Microsoft Teams?
Yes.
I'm curious, how does that work for you?
It works, but it's, it's not the same. When, when, you know, when John Pinto can't come to the council meeting and sit in the council chambers and, and comment, when you call in, it's just not the same. But as far as getting business done, we are meeting, you know, the open meeting laws, and we are getting things done, but I still like an open meeting when you have a participatory audience. And that's what I miss, but we'll get back there.
Now, just from a technology standpoint, do you like Microsoft Teams equal to, worse than, or better than Zoom or any other platform?
No comment because the city, the city uses, they handle it all. And so I don't have to do anything with Teams. I just show up.
Yeah.
Where Zoom, I have, and my wife Linda have to, we have to host meetings, and so that's how it works. But as far as what, what platform is better, I can't say.
Right. Okay, so let's go to your campaign. I will come right out and say that I am supportive of you to become the next mayor. I will do everything I can to help you be the next mayor.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome. So if people want to call in for yard signs, text campaigns, email campaigns, phone calling, donations, who do they contact and how do they contact them?
Thank you. Thank you for that. The best way is my webpage, scottsedgley.com. That's it.
Sedgley. Now, I know you were a poor white child, and you missed at least one E on that name. So can you tell the audience how to spell scottsedgley.com?
Scott with two Ts, S-C-O-T-T, and Sedgley is S-E-D-G-L-E-Y.
Dot com.
Dot com. And that, that lays it out there. There's tabs to push if you just want to say hi, if you'd like to request a yard sign, if you'd like to make a donation, if you would be interested in me using your name on endorsement material, it's all there. We update it with news, there's photographs, and so that's, that's where I can keep track of everything. That's the best way to do it. We have a Facebook page. You can look us up on Facebook, and we do things there. But for, for the campaign, scottsedgley.com is the best way to go.
Very good. Well, I don't mean to be irresponsible, but you know, we do have a Cabernet Sauvignon tasting at 3:00 PM. So can you tell us what you want the audience to understand in terms of what your objectives are for, as mayor, you know, what you want to emphasize before we sign off?
Well, I think we touched on it a little bit earlier. You know, it's, it's a vibrant economy. A diverse economy is ideal. We're working on the diversity, but it's a vibrant economy because that makes everything go for our services, our, you know, our sidewalks, our parks, our fire, our police, everything. Our economy, that's how it's run. So that's it. Our organization, it's our job to make sure we have the right people in doing efficient work for our community. That's it. And number three of my priority is where we live, our environment. I am an environmentalist. I believe in climate change. It is real. We have to reduce our footprint on this earth. And so, you know, my big thing is water. You know, the city of Napa is water supply. We have two surface reservoirs that we, we maintain, and then we also buy water out of the state water project. But during drought years, that state water project, water can be reduced. So we will rely on our own reservoirs. So I'm, I'm passionate about protecting our watershed, you know, reducing our carbon footprint in the schools. So that's what I'm about. It's where we live. It's safety, you know, we enjoy, you know, Napa, my wife grew up. where we live. It's safety. You know, we enjoy, you know, Napa, my wife grew up here, I grew up here. Napa is the most amazing place to live. And my role is to protect that, nurture it, maintain it for future generations. I have grandchildren in this town, and that's why I do it, for my grandchildren, right? You know, I'm done, you know. I've been blessed. You know, life has been good to me and my family, and now I'm working for my grandkids and the kids in town. And that's what we have to do. It's just simple. Be kind. You know the red button that the Finkelstein girls, Ruby and Tallulah?
Yes.
What a simple message. Just be kind.
I do remember seeing that. Very good. Excellent. Well, I hope you will join me again at Inglewood.
Oh, my pleasure.
And, you know, I will ply you with Cabernet Sauvignon for as long as it takes to get you here.
John, thank you so much. And thank you, everybody, for checking in.
Take care. Bye-bye. Talk to you soon.